As a former child, just call us to order for purposes of election. So.
All right, I'll do a, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Callahan?
Here.
Commissioner Cloud?
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn? Commissioner Nadine?
I present.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Here.
Commissioner Walsh?
Here.
Commissioner Healy?
Present.
Commissioner Marsh?
Here.
And Commissioner Weiner? All right. So as John, so as a, as a, as Commissioner Schoenhorn said, we'll start with a taking. The nominations for our chair.
Turn to Commissioner Nadine for the motion.
Sorry, you cut out for a second.
All right.
So I nominate Commissioner Kerry Callahan to serve as board chair and John Schoenhorn to serve as board secretary for the calendar year 2022, and further nominate John Schoenhorn to serve as board chair and Kerry Callahan to serve as board secretary for calendar year 2023.
All right, just so I get that clear, but I was, that I was a commissioner. Just muted them. All right, so, so that's going to be Commissioner Callahan for chair for 2022?
Correct.
And Schoenhorn for secretary for 2022?
Yes.
And Schoenhorn for chair for 2023?
Yep.
And Callahan for 2023. All right. Any other nominations? Going once? Any other nominations going twice? All right.
Was there a second? I couldn't hear. There was.
Yeah, no one seconded my motion. There was not one.
I'll second the motion. Steve Walsh.
I'll do that again. Any other nominations for chair? Going once? Any other nominations for chair going twice? Any other nominations? All right. Now? Now the vote? Only.
Do you want to go by name?
Yeah.
Do you want to go by?
Roll call.
Roll call.
The regular members are allowed to vote, so. Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Commissioner, no, the ones on here, Commissioner Nadine?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Aye.
And Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
All right, so, so congratulations, John. All right, Chair, do you take us on to the next?
Yes, welcome everyone to the January 18th, 2022, meeting of the Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals. Will the secretary please read the notice into the record?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM on the following application. Peter O'Connor, application for variance to reduce side yard setback from 25 feet to 17 feet for location of in-ground pool at 54 Forest Hills Drive, R40 zone. Con Edison Solutions, application for variance to reduce rear yard setback from 50 feet to 23 feet for ground-mounted solar array at 10 Mountain Lane, R80 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at www.farmington CT dot org backslash about hyphen Farmington backslash calendar hyphen meetings period. A copy of this proposal is available online at www.farmington CT dot org backslash government backslash zoning hyphen board hyphen of hyphen heels or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at gate zero six seven five two three two five dated at Farmington, Connecticut, December 29, 2021. Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, John Schoen, John Schoenhorn, Chairman.
With regard to the first item on, on our agenda, this is, this is the variance application for.
54.
54 Forest Hill Drive in Farmington, and the applicant is listed as Peter O'Connor. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, we, we saw that this was kind of a tight job.
Mr. O'Connor, we can't understand you. You got. You're coming through with a lot of feedback.
Yeah. You know why? You've got two, you've got two things that are. Hold on, let's, I'm going to kick you out of this one. Yeah, you know what? Yeah, let me do this one. Can I ask to mute that one? All right, now try it. Try now, Peter. That's not working. Hold on. All right, we're going to mute the other one.
Am I good now?
Here we go. Perfect.
All right, I'll start where I, I will start again where I left off. May we hear from the applicant with regard to 54 Forest Hill Drive? Now I'm hearing nothing.
Peter, go ahead. Can you hear us up? Peter? All right, Ron just joined in.
It's all right.
Peter, can you hear us?
I think Peter left. This is Carla Russo, the owner of 54 Forest Hills Drive. I don't know if I can help, but I can try to explain what he was trying to explain.
Okay, yeah, as long as there's someone that's online to discuss it. So, sorry, your name is coming up as Peter O'Connor, so can I hear your name again?
Our first name is Carla and last name is Russo.
Carla Russo, okay. Go ahead.
So we're just looking for a variance for an in-ground pool. I guess the septic tank, where it's located, I guess it's too close to where they're, they're going to build the in-ground pool, so they're. Oh, Peter's on.
We just lost her.
Muted. Peter, are you on? Because he can explain it better than I can.
He's looking now. I don't know. I don't think he, he can't hear us either.
Okay.
Problem is, we've got three heaters on here.
Bruce, it's clear. There's too many people. It's feedback because they're wa, listening in on more than one.
Exactly. I'm trying to set off one. All right. Commissioner Llewellyn, can you hear us?
Hello?
Who's this?
This is Peter O'Connor.
Okay, Peter, we've got you.
We can hear you. Go ahead. Sorry about that. Sorry, everyone.
Good morning.
So we knew it was a tight, tight space, so we hired Mr. Whitney to fit the pool in between the septic and the leach fields, and it ended up that there was a about seven, eight feet going over the borderline of the property. We didn't feel that that would be a huge issue because the neighbor's home looked to be pretty far off the property line, and there, there was a wooded area, and it was hard to even see the neighbor's house in the, in the summertime when I, when I was there. So we felt that we, we had a good case to, to be able to have the, the Russos put the pool in, in that spot.
Anything else, sir?
That's it for now.
So why does the pool have to be over that far? Was, is there a regulation with regards to?
Yes, it's got to be 25 feet away from the, the septic.
The septic system and the septic tank? So that's what it shows here?
Yep.
So it's got to be a minimum of 25 feet from the septic, from the leach field as well as the septic tank?
Yes.
We also. So now there, it's a colored picture. In addition, that's all you had? Peter, you're all set?
Yes, I'm all set.
All right.
With that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Can we ask questions of the applicant, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Okay, you want to do that? I take it before we see if there's any, anyone else speaking in the application's favor? Uh, go ahead. Do you, do we want to go?
In order?
I think we should. I may be a little rusty at this. With questioning, are we going to go in order?
That's, that's how we did it this past year.
That's how we've been doing it. Now, remember, why don't we do that? Um, and I wouldn't start, as I recall, correct?
Well, you may. I, I always went last, but that's, the chair's prerogative.
Okay.
Um, well, I'll go first, at least on this application. My question, Mr. O'Connor, is that the, any variance has to be supported by a finding of substantial hardship. What's the substantial hardship in this case?
It would cost a lot more money for the homeowner to, to move the septic system around it than it would to just leave it where it is and just move it, uh, move the borderline a little bit towards the, the neighbor's yard. I don't think there's any problem with seven feet over that way as opposed to thousands of dollars of excavation and relocation in that yard, and that's a tight yard to, to move around, and it's, it's on a, built on a bank, and there's not a lot of room. So I, I feel that it is a hardship for the Russos to try to relocate all that septic equipment.
You've answered my question. Thank you. Uh, may we go in order, please, for the remainder of the committee members?
Do you want me to call the names, or do you want to?
Yes, that, I don't have the, the list in front of me, so the, the same.
I thought, no.
By which we took attendance, please.
Commissioner Cloud? No questions at this time. Okay. Commissioner Llewellyn?
I think I didn't see enough of the information to be able to vote on this. Uh, I don't know if you guys had appointed somebody prior to me getting on or not.
No, you, we logged on. I thought you were in, so we'll have to appoint an alternate.
Yeah, please do, because I didn't, I didn't really get a chance to look at the information well enough to be able to, to help at this point.
All right, then, who is here in the form of alternates?
We have Commissioner Healy and Commissioner Marsh.
All right. As Chair, I will appoint Commissioner Healy, who is new to the commission, to serve as the alternate for this application regarding 54 Forest Hills Drive.
Commissioner Healy, any questions?
I'm comfortable at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Nadine?
I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
And then Commissioner Schoenhorn?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Mr. O'Connor, it's not clear for me. What relationship are you to this application? Are you the contractor for the pool?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So you indicated that there was, um, that the issue, that the hardship you were explaining is one of, of cost, but I think our rules and the statutes required have something to do with the shape of the property or something to do with the, um, either the contours or location of the property itself in terms of the difficulty. So can you explain why it would be difficult, as the neighbor suggest, has suggested, to move leaching fields? Why that wouldn't work?
It, it would work, but it's very, it'd be a very costly thing, and the, the cost of the pool is expensive, and that's just going to be additional cost for the Russos, and that may, in fact, eliminate the, uh, the pool being built. If they, they, they have a certain budget, and the pool is meeting the budget, basically, and any more excavation and having to move stuff around is probably going to eliminate the pool and actually decrease the value of the potential increased property value.
On the, uh, did you get to see the letter that the neighbor, Mr. Bailey, wrote opposing the, or opposing the, the variance? Did you get a chance to look at that?
Mr. Bailey? I didn't, I, I saw one from Dr. Anem, I believe. I didn't see a Mr. Bailey.
I'm sorry, from 50, I thought 56 Forest Hills Drive. I thought the name was.
Yes, correct. I did read that. Yes, I did see that.
So I was just going to ask you, was there give, any thought given to either to rotating the pool or changing the dimensions of the pool to keep the, to keep at least the side yard, uh, distance correct?
We hadn't really thought of that. It's a possibility, but we, we are hoping it's not necessary because we already paid Mr. Whitney to lay out the, uh, the pool, and it looks like a perfect area. Everybody's happy with it except for the, uh, the, uh, the person in 50, property 56, and I mean, seven feet more, I, I don't really, uh, I think, I think the, the right thing to do is just leave everything and, and save everybody a lot of aggravation and time and work.
But, well, let me ask you, can, uh, Bruce, can you, I, I've sent out some, I went out and, and I think the owner was very gracious to let me look at the side yard and take some pictures. Could you just pull up those, the couple of pictures that I, uh, that were submitted?
No, I don't think I saw them, really. Forget to log them. Give me a second. Yeah, let me go. I'll drop them all over in a second if you want to.
Yeah, let me just ask a, a couple of questions because it's going to relate to those pictures. There's now an in-ground, I mean, an above-ground pool in the yard, and I can't really tell from your diagram whether this pool is going to be in the same area or a different area than the above-ground. Can you answer that question?
It's going to be similar. It's going to be similar. It's going to be, uh, cover a little more ground. It's going to go further toward the, uh, the neighbor's, uh, property line.
But is it going to, do you know, what are this, what's the diameter of the above-ground pool that's there now? And I think if we look at the pictures, I mean, the reason I'm thinking that is if there's already an above-ground pool, one that's in-ground, would actually be less obtrusive, perhaps, but I'm not sure that's the case.
Can I jump in one second? So the in-ground pool will not exceed where the above-ground pool is. So, um, when you were out and if you had looked at, so there's the above-ground pool, and then we have that little deck. It's not really a deck, but just to go in. The new in-ground pool would end right there. So we would, we, we wouldn't be increasing anything over from where the above-ground pool is currently. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. That's why I want to look at those pictures, because the diagram, okay, there, okay, that's the one. Yeah, that's the one. I see the, of the in-ground, I mean, the above-ground pool. There's a, you have a deck on top of that, correct?
Yeah, correct. So it, the new pool would end right, see where those pillars are from the, the deck? That's where the new pool would end.
So from where I stood in your yard there, the, it would not exceed the, or extend past the rear of the longest wall of the house, which is, I assume, the blue wall, which is part of your garage, but that was part of the house, correct?
Correct. A hundred, yes, you are correct.
But, but the diagram makes it look like it does, so I'm confused. What you've submitted, you go back to your, uh, diagram.
Right.
Let me suck it.
Well, Peter can answer that. I know when they came out, we sprayed it, and the end of the pool was right at the corner of the house.
But I'm looking at what he submitted to us, and it clearly extends quite a distance past the end of the house, whereas your above-ground pool does not. So that's somewhat, that was confusing to me when I looked at this picture. Um, and, you know, I mean, under our, under our rules, it has to be a certain distance from the neighboring property, but it also has to be behind the longest rear wall of the principal building, which would clearly, what you're telling me it would be, but the diagram makes it look like it's not, and.
Or it isn't.
So I'm confused by that, too. So I'm sure Peter could probably answer that, but I was under the impression the pool ends at the corner of the house and would not go past that.
And I'm looking at this picture, and, you know, no, you, you, you were kind enough to let me in the yard, but I didn't talk to you about anything. Does this fence go along your property line, or is that fence within, substantially within your actual property line with your neighbor at 56?
It goes on our property line. There's probably about, um, if you have looked, I don't know if you took a picture of the front of the house, but he has a wooden fence in the front of the house.
That picture, there's that picture.
So his property line is where his fence is, and our property line is where our white fence is. So there's a, a space. I'm not sure how many inches or feet in between, but that shows where the property lines are.
Go to the other, I took, there's a third picture I, I submitted. You see, there's a jag in the fence, so it's, it seems to be, was parallel, and then it moved to the left and then goes down. What? Your property line is straight, right?
Yeah, so the reason for that is when we purchased the house, um, our yard ended right where that, kind of that corner is, and then it just went all the way down. There was no, no dirt, anything. It was just a, a steep hill. So we filled that five years ago with tons of, um, fill to level out and make that tiny little backyard that we do have. Um, so that's why it kind of looks like that weird shape. Does that answer?
That raises another question. So the part of the fence to the left of the, of the zag in the fence, though, it makes it look like, that piece there, it, where the, where the cursor is moving, it makes it look like, if you then go and look at the other picture, which shows your above-ground pool, it makes it look like you're almost directly on your property, where the, the pool will come within a couple of feet of your property line, not what you were proposing in the application. So that's.
Oh, no. Oh, no, where you have the cursor, we have two acres past that all the way down.
Right, but I can't, I was unable to tell where your actual property line with your neighbor at 56 is from the fence. The fence doesn't help, does it?
Yes, that's our property line, but where you had a cursor, um, our property line exceeds behind that. Um, he's only on the side of us, but past that is all, it's all our yard.
I am. I'm lost.
And so my last question is, so will the in-ground, are you saying that the in-ground pool itself, not counting any patio or, um, anything you put around it, the actual part of the, um, the, where there's going to be water, are you saying it will not extend? We can just enlarge it back to the. Okay, so I'm looking at your, right now we have the, the GPS, the GSI image of your property here. All right, and it's 54 is there. It does look like your property line is a straight line. Correct? It is not a jet, there's no, uh, cutout jag. It seems to be a straight line. Right?
Yeah, but just the fence makes it look weird because we only filled a certain part of our yard.
The fence, does the fence curve? Is what I'm seeing in this image here, the shadow there where the cursor is now, is that where your fence curved, so it's not on your property line?
Yes, it curves.
Okay, all right, all right. So can you, can you, and then the last question is, assuming that the pool itself will not extend beyond the, uh, uh, longest length of your, of your house there on the back, um, that it'll be less obtrusive than the above-ground pool that's currently there from the neighbor, and I don't mean to use obtrusive in a pejorative sense. I mean it in the sense of less, less obvious.
100%. I, I agree, because this way, he had, he won't even be able to see the in-ground pool as opposed to seeing the above-ground pool from his deck. And I know one of his concerns was, we block the view sometimes. I don't know how that's possible, but, um, I would think he would be in favor of the in-ground pool because it's less obvious, if that makes any sense.
I, I think I'm, we're on, on, on the same point as you. I think I, I understand what you're saying. So, uh, would you be replacing the, the white vinyl fence around this pool, or are you going to keep that fence?
It all depends on when the workers get in. If anything gets damaged, um, we're, we're hoping we can reuse it. It's new. Um, but if it gets damaged while they're taking the panels out with a machine, then yes, we'll have to replace it.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Walsh?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Okay. Oh, sorry, and then they, I know we have, no, I've been overheating, didn't I?
Yeah.
And then, uh, Commissioner Healy, I think I asked you already, right?
Yes, I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
And then, um, and then, and then we have, uh, Commissioner Marsh.
Commissioner Marsh was not, Commissioner Marsh can't ask questions, sir.
Yeah.
Well, I'm allowed to.
Yeah, you're allowed to talk, ask, ask questions.
Oh, okay. I'm just looking at this, and I'm seeing it's right against the property law of the adjoining property. Now, where's the pool going to actually end? And are you already over the property law?
I think, I, I think I was mistaken. Uh, I was going by the drawing that, uh, Mr. Whitney sent, but I think that Carla Russo straightened it out. The pool is going to actually be closer to the, uh, to the home and not as far into the property line. So it was my, my mistake. I thought we were going to be trying to build it out a little more, but it's going to be closer to the, uh, to the home now.
So where is the problem with the, uh? Never mind. I take that back. I'm confused because I'm seeing one thing in actual pictures, and I'm seeing another thing on the drawing. I don't know which one is correct.
This is the, this is the proposed in-ground pool, and she has an existing above-ground pool now, and they're going to be taking that out and putting in an in-ground pool.
I think you're playing it very close to property line. And disturbs me.
We, the, the engineer put it close to the property line because it was, uh, the septic was in the way, so we tried to move the pools away from the septic as far as we could.
But in this case, you're, you're saying you can't move the septic because it will be too expensive to do that. But you're going to do the new pool even further close to the property law. But you're going to do the new pool even further close to the property law.
So it, it's not just about the price of moving the septic tank. Our yard, we have two acres of nothing. It slopes all the way down. So the hardship is the way that our, our property line and our yard is, is set up. So we're doing the best that we can with a little yard that we do have. Um, and that's, that's why we're trying to fit it in, because that's the only place that would fit in, besides on the side of the house, which we know that, that those are special permits that we would have to take, and we were trying to avoid that.
Again, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, well, there is room behind in the back of your property.
There isn't. It's, it slopes all the way down.
Is that what you're talking about here? This is all, once it gets out of here, the, the, the slope is very, sorry.
But not up here.
There, there is no yard, sir. The only yard that we have is where you see that kidney shape. That is our only yard. There's nothing else. Everything else slopes down, and then we have a small side yard. But where the pool is going now, it's technically where the above-ground pool is currently, and then it's going to go towards the opposite side of our backyard. So it's really not, we're not increasing our pool to what we currently already have to 56. We're increasing it the other direction.
You have paced it in the other direction.
Correct. And that is the only yard we have. We don't have.
Okay. Commissioner Marsh, further questions?
No.
Thank you.
We did, we did receive just the run though, sir. Again, we sent those out to the commissioners as well as the applicants. Uh, we did receive two, uh, letters in opposition, one from 54 Forest Hills Drive, which I think everyone got to see, as well as.
That's actually from 56.
Yeah, and then one from, sorry, apologize, 56, and then this one, which was from 57 as well. So we did receive both of these in, in opposition.
Have all the commissioners been, had an opportunity to read those letters?
No.
Uh, for the record, I did not see the email, uh, the Sunday email from Dr. Alom, but, um, it's pretty short, so I just did.
Yeah, I put those in everyone's package this morning. So that was in that big package I sent out this morning, both of these in the same one. They kind of keep them together.
And I'm sorry, is 57 across the street from 56 Forest Hills Drive? I probably should know this.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Having heard from Mr. O'Connor and from Ms. Russo, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the application, in the applicant's favor?
All right. I think we, if anybody, if anybody would, if anybody would like to speak, please use the Zoom raise hand function at the bottom of, of your screen, and, uh, and we'll let you talk. Again, if anyone would like to speak, oh, we got a Jeff Bailey. Give me a second. Oh, it's gone. He was, raised his hand, then he was gone. Go ahead, Jeff. You can talk.
Mr. Bailey, you're muted.
No, he was.
I don't see you speaking in favor. I don't think you've asked for opposition yet, right?
I haven't. No, I haven't.
I apologize. I thought you just said anybody.
No, I asked if there was anybody who wanted to speak favor of the applicant other than Mr. O'Connor and Ms. Russo. I do not hear anybody else.
Daniel Quick might want to speak, but he, he's having a problem getting into the meeting for some reason.
Uh, uh, I will simply ask another, one more time, is there anyone other than Ms. Russo and Mr. O'Connor who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? Hearing no takers, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Again, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom.
All right, we have Jeff Bailey.
Mr. Bailey, understanding that you wish to speak against the application, go ahead.
We need your, uh, name and your address. You have to hit unmute, and then you have to give us your name and your address.
You're still muted, Mr. Bailey.
All right, you're unmuted. Go ahead, talk. No. Just for the record, this is the same person that left the, uh, the, the correspondence as well. So if he's not allowed to talk, at least he gave, uh, his, uh, correspondence.
I, I don't, Mr. Seer, I don't think that's correct, but it's the chairman's call whether somebody can speak if they submitted a letter.
No, I didn't. I'm just, I'm just letting everyone know.
Certainly, certainly Mr. Bailey has an opportunity to speak, even though he submitted a letter. It seems that he, that we're having problems, uh, technically just hearing him. I'm showing that Jeffrey Bailey is in the meeting, has his hand raised, and is unmuted, but I still don't hear him. Mr. Bailey, if you can hear us, please say something so we can hear you.
He lowered his hand, so.
All right. Um, if Mr. Bailey is able to connect such that we can hear his comments, we can only consider them up until the time of the vote. Um, however, I will ask at this point if there is anyone, anyone else who wishes to speak against the application. And again, if that, if you are such a person, raise your hand using the Zoom function. I see that Mr. Bailey has raised his hand again. Mr. Bailey, if it appears that you are unmuted, if you do wish to say anything, and again, there's no need to repeat what is contained in your letter, because we've already seen that. If you wish to add anything further, please do so, and hopefully we'll hear you this time.
The chair, maybe it's his own volume.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It could be, it could be a, a lot of things. Um.
Mr. Bailey, he can call in as well if he wants. If he's having trouble, he can call in on the phone numbers as well, so, and speak. Yep.
Dan.
Yeah, yeah. We have another one from Dan Quick. Do you want me to bring him in?
Sure.
What's that?
Sure.
Yes, please.
All right. Mr. Quick, uh, you could, you could, you could, uh, uh, unmute yourself, and you can speak.
How do you press it? Can you hear me now?
Here we go.
Okay, now we've got two people.
This is unbelievable.
Whom are we hearing now?
Dan Quick.
Okay.
Need your address, please?
My address is, uh, 215 Country Club Road, Avon, Connecticut.
Okay.
For the pool going in. I've been trying to get into this meeting for, uh, since it started.
Okay, so Mr. Quick, you're at this juncture.
I'm with Pete O'Connor.
All right, okay, at this juncture, you're, you're out of order, but I will include you, given that you were unable to speak because of a technical difficulty.
Yes.
At this point in time, please stay with the meeting, Mr. Quick. And you can mute yourself if you like, but please remain in attendance. And I will ask again, Mr. Bailey, if you seem to be the only person who is present in the meeting who wishes to speak against the applicant, or against the application. Um, we have received and read your letter. We can take one more shot at hearing your public comments. Please unmute yourself and see if you can join one more time. All right, uh, Mr. Bailey remains muted, and we have not been able to hear his public comments. However, we have been able to review his written comments, which are part of the record. We, that I will, because he was excluded by technical difficulties, ask, I'll reopen the commentary in favor of the applicant to accommodate Mr. Quick. Go ahead, Mr. Quick.
How you doing? I'm just, I've, I've been doing pools for, I own Hartford Pool for thirty-something years, and, uh, twenty-five feet on the side property line is, you know, really unheard of. I mean, just, I've been doing this a long time, and I, I haven't ran into this in a long time. So we're just looking for a couple of feet here.
Understood. Do you have any further comments, Mr. Quick?
No, I'm just saying, the way, uh, uh, the homeowner explained it, that yard is a tough spot, and there's only one little teeny spot to put that pool. And that's right where we put it.
Understood. Having heard from Mr. Quick, do you have anything further to say, Mr. Quick?
No, that's it.
Understood. Uh, having for, having heard from Mr. Quick, I will now close that portion of the hearing comment regarding, or in favor of the application. Uh, I take it there is nobody else seeking to speak against the application, and therefore are declared the public portion of the hearing closed. Is there discussion among the commissioners?
Mr. Kalin, I'll just remind, I think we need to have discussion. We need to have a, a, a motion.
We do need a motion. Will somebody make a motion, please, with regard to the application for variance at 54 Forest Hill Drive?
No move.
What's the?
Second, John Healy.
Is the motion to approve the application?
Motion is to approve the application.
I second.
Yeah, we already have, we already have a second.
Okay, there's a, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? And for this, let's go to go through in terms, in the same order that we did for roll call. However, as chair, for discussion purposes, I will leave myself to the last.
All right. Commissioner Cloud?
Uh, seems fairly straightforward to me. It looks like the only location that's feasible for the pool is in the location specified further if the existing above-ground pool was, uh, a problem. This one seems to mitigate that problem by putting it in-ground and avoiding whatever, um, uh, intrusion it posed to the, uh, the neighbor in 56, I believe. So those are my thoughts and comments.
All right. Uh, so in place of Commissioner Llewellyn, we had Commissioner Healy.
Thank you. Uh, I echo Commissioner Cloud's comments. Uh, you know, the, at the outset of the testimony, it seemed like the nature of the hardship was grounded in cost, but I think very clearly through discussion, uh, it, it's, it's, you know, very um, easily discernible that, that with the pitch of the property and everything like that, that, uh, this is probably the, the feasible place for it. So I have no problem with it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, uh, Adim?
I agree with the previous comments. Um, I see that the hardship is that the property significantly slopes after where they currently have the in-ground pool, and it seems that, um, sorry, the above-ground pool, and then the in-ground pool would be less obtrusive to the neighbors.
All right. Commissioner Walsh?
I, I have nothing to add. I agree with what's said previously about the hardship.
All right, Chair?
Well, do I get to speak too?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, I, I wanted to also clear, uh, make clear that the financial hardship that was first addressed would not have constituted a hardship that we are and can consider. So if that had been the only reason, um, I would have had to, um, um, reject this application. But as it was clarified, um, it is pretty clear that this is the location that it has to be in. My only concern is hearing the discussion of where the pool is intended to be versus looking at a plan that clearly puts it at some distance to the side. And the application talks about, uh, reducing the side yard, um, setback from twenty-five feet to, I think, seventeen and a half feet. And we heard from Mr. Fix saying he's never heard of that, but that's our, that's the Farmington zoning regulations that require that. So if he's never heard of it, and apparently he's never built a pool in, in Farmington. Uh, my only other comment would be that in looking at the town's swimming pool ordinances, it does require that a swimming pool, um, be behind the rear wall of the principal building. And I hear the applicant saying that's where it's intended to be, but the diagram and some of the other comments suggest that that's not the case. Having said that, I do agree that an in-ground pool would be less obtrusive than the above-ground pool. So if it is in the same location, I, I do not consider the concern about it wrecking the view from the neighbor's deck to be that significant. So those are my comments.
Mr. Shonhorn, if I could just clear something up for you?
Who's speaking?
It's, it's all right, uh, Bruce, Bruce Seir speaking. Um, when it says behind the rear portion, this is the line here. So as long as it's behind that portion, then it's safe. It could be anywhere along this line, but it just has to be behind this rear longest yard.
Right, and I, I, I agree, and I'm saying the image I'm seeing makes it look like it goes beyond that, even though the above-ground pool does not. So I look at this diagram, it clearly goes well, it looks like half of that kidney-shaped pool is past it, but we're in discussion now anyway, so I'm not sure this is a good, proper debate, but I'll just, you know, leave, leave it as that. All right, Chair. Up to the Chair.
My comments are, I, I agree with everybody's comments to the effect that the in-ground pool would probably be nicer and less visible than the above-ground pool, uh, but I've got a problem with substantial hardship on this one. All right, subject to that, we have had comments for and against. We have had this, we have a motion, and we have a second. May we have a calling of the roll for the vote on the first application on tonight's agenda, please?
All right. Hold on. What, what was that? All right. Commissioner Cloud?
I vote in favor, which is an I.
All right, uh, Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn, uh, Commissioner Healy?
Aye.
Commissioner, um, Adim?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Shonhorn? I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes. And then, uh, Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And then, uh, Chairman?
Nay.
All right. Washington passes.
With that, then, we move to the second or perhaps the third item on this evening's agenda, the application of Con Edison Solutions for a variance with regard to ten oh, what's the, I'm sorry, there it is, Ten Mountain Lane, Farmington, Connecticut, for the placement of a solar array. Uh, and this is a follow-up to a previous variance that we granted. I don't remember exactly when it was. It was recently.
September.
Wait a second.
Okay, September of twenty-one. First of all, with regard to this variance application, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Hi, I'm showing up with Rachel Schaefer, but I'm Andy Masha. I'm an engineering manager for Con Edison Solutions. Thirty-eight Beaverburg Road, Danbury, Connecticut.
All right, you were a little garbled there at first, Mr. Schaefer, but I think we can hear you now. Please go ahead and, and please let us know
Unbelievable, huh?
All right, why this additional variance is required?
Okay, the, the first variance, uh, which you folks approved, uh, and we went over all the hardships and the reasons, was, uh, basically, i- it ended up part of the array was in the reserve septic area. When we went in front of the, um, Board of Health, other department, health department. So we ended up just moving it slightly to get it out of the, uh, the reserve area of septic.
All right, do you have any further comments, Mr. Bailey? All right, do you have any further comments, Mr. Schaefer?
They do not. And, and I can answer any questions, but, uh, no comments right now.
Okay, uh, questions for Mr. Schaefer? I guess if we stick consistently to the format from the last time, I'll go first. On the screen, do you see the? Was somebody else speaking? On the screen, Mr. Schaefer? Either I'm interrupting somebody or somebody's interrupting me. I'm not sure which.
We're looking to find out who it is, so. I don't see him. Okay.
All right, Mr. Schaefer, with regard to the blue rectangle that appears on the map, it's on our screens, it's designated SP dash one A in the lower right-hand corner. What is that blue rectangle reflecting?
The blue, the blue rectangle, that's the, um, the ground-mounted solar array. That's the, the horizontal projection of it.
Okay, and where was the solar array to be placed pursuant to the last application and variance that we granted? Can you describe it or show it to me?
Actually.
Some kind of depiction?
I don't think I have that application in front of me.
I have it right here. Give me a second, right there. So here, here's where it was on the, uh, previous application. All right, there's the fifty-foot, uh, setback right there, the septic system. Partially over there, o- over the, uh, over the overhang, or over the, uh, setback, and now on this one, it's located almost all behind the fifty-foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
Or, or over the fifty-foot setback.
And again, the reason for that, you're indicating, Mr. Schaefer, is that you were required by town officials to make that adjustment based on the presence of the septic system?
Based on the, the reserve area for the septic system.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Anyone else in order, please?
I think I'm up next.
I believe you are, Mr. Cloud.
Can you blow that down a little bit, Bruce, so I can see where this property is in conjunction to its neighbors and this is, uh, really, correct?
I think I have a different sheet. Let's see, what do we got here? Um, we have something showing the whole.
The question, I guess, is fairly simple. So is this interfering with anyone else's uh, property line or view, uh, where it's being proposed to be placed at this point?
I don't, I don't think it really changes the view from anywhere else, um, any different than last time. It just moved it back a little bit to get it out of that reserve area. This is, this is a low, this is, excuse me, a low-tilt array. So it's
And it's got existing, you're, you're trying to power up or support what is already on the roofs, what it looks like, the photo, uh, array on the, on the, on the, on the roof, correct?
Correct. Last, last time we discussed the fact that, um, this is only for the, the measured self-consumption of the house, it's not to export power. Except for that metering, but it's, it's definitely, uh, just the power to house.
Gotcha. Okay, no, that was my question. As long as it's not intruding someone else's property line or view in some way, like our, uh, prior application. It's kind of hard to tell from this photograph what you're abutting, but I sense that it's not.
There's the property line is right here, and there's a house that's under construction that's right around here, per se.
Right, that's right off of, um, Mountain Spring, right?
Yeah, Mountain Spring is here, the intersection of Mountain Spring, I, uh, that I put the site. I don't know if I put the aerial in this one, give me a second.
I drove by this, uh, yesterday, uh, that's why I'm asking.
Put the aerial in this one. Yeah, I sent you the aerial, and I guess I forgot to put it in this one here.
That's okay.
So. All right.
Thank you.
Good, sorry, is there more?
No, I'm all set.
Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn?
That's my understanding that the last time it was contested by the neighbor, because it came into their view, um, I don't remember if it was because it was so far back or the positioning of it. Um, how far did the array actually move from the original location back and over? Ha, ha, exactly how, how many feet did it go in each direction?
It's sixty feet on the proposed, okay, eighteen feet off the property line, sixty feet off, this is the most recent application.
Okay, the previous app?
And the previous app is right here. So it's still roughly sixty, and it's, it's gone from, uh, thirty-one to eighteen. So this, so this dimension actually eight inches further this way, and it's gone back further.
Considerably further back to the property line.
Exactly.
All right, no further questions?
All right, Commissioner, uh, Nadine?
No questions at this time.
Then Commissioner Stonehorn?
When you, when you were here in, in, uh, September, um, the applica, I just went back and I watched part of the, um, hearing and reviewed the materials. You did say at that time in the application that there was no other, um, feasible place to put the, um, trench for the conduits. Um, is that still the case based on this reconfiguration? And who, well, that's my first question. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is.
Right, and, and who or what, uh, municipal body or, or, or individual indicated to you that the other location that you, that we gave you an approval for uh, would not be correct or would not be feasible for, uh, some other reason?
That's the Department of Health, but the regional, what's it called, the, um?
Farming Valley Health District?
Yes.
What did they say? This is an, this is an above-ground, um, array, correct?
No, no, but, but it, the, the original one intruded into the reserve septic area.
Can you, can you tell me what that means?
Ba- basically, it meant that, that if, if the septic ever had to be expen, you know, use the reserve area, the array would have had to be moved.
All right, and did you receive some kind of a letter or report regarding that, that has not been submitted to us?
I actually don't know. I'm, unfortunately, I, the admin who did this work is not on the call tonight.
Because what, what I'm trying to, um, understand is, you're asking, your application makes it look like you didn't already receive a uh, a, a variance for the rear setback, and it makes it look like you're seeking a variance from the fifty-foot set, uh, rear setback, which is not the case. So I'm just wondering if you could just articulate for me, what is the hardship from what we've already granted you to, um, to what it is? I'm, I'm, I'm reading it right now. It's, uh, as I said, it does not show that you already received a, um, yeah, it doesn't indicate that you already received a variance. So I'm, what it, can you just articulate for us, what is the hardship from what we already granted you to needing this, uh, variance on the variance?
I gue, I guess the hardship is that if we, if we kept it where it was approved before, um, the fact that we're there really is, I don't believe there's another location for the septic reserve area. And, and they're, you know, they're saying that we're in the reserve area where it was granted.
And did they come out and do an inspection, or did they base that on looking at maps, the, the?
I believe they did with maps.
All right. And even though you don't have it to us, you're saying you, you representing to us that you have in your possession some kind of documentation, whether it's an email or a letter or a report from the Farmington Valley, uh, Health District that has indicated to you that this location uh, is within the reserve septic tank area, or reserve leaching field or septic area?
Yes, if, if, um, I, I could call the administrator right now if you, if you give me a minute, or I can, um.
Well, you know, it, it uh, first of all, that's not up to me. I'm just asking the questions right now.
Okay.
Um, and I just have a couple of questions. I think, uh, Commissioner Llewellyn asked you, um, the, the, um, the neighbor at Two Mountain Lane. Um, I note that the materials you have submitted did not show the existence of that house. Um, but it is a rather large neighboring house, uh, that's just, uh, to the I think it's nor, no, it's to the, uh, east there. And the question was asked about whether, you know, as part of the previous approval, uh, you were going to work with the, um, with the town staff to make sure that the array was shaded or at least, um, shrouded or, or blocked to extent possible from the, uh, neighbor's property. By moving it back, does it make it more obvious and visible to that neighbor or less?
Yeah, I believe it makes it less. And I think the last time we said we would put some arborvitae in, like four arborvitae to, uh, to tend to block the view from the neighbor.
And I, you, I assume that if we make the same condition um, in this application, you were, you, you have no problem or difficulty with that?
No, we have no problem with that.
And, and is this moving the, uh, the, uh, array further back to the proper, rear property line? Is that going to result in any large deciduous trees being removed that were not previously contemplated?
No.
Now, so that the property owner on, um, Old Mountain Road that looks whose property looks down towards the, uh, this property will not suddenly see a, a giant array of solar panels in his or her or their, um, uh, rear of their property?
No, it's, it's actually farther away by a few feet, so it should be less visible rather than more visible.
When you say further away, isn't it closer to the rear property line?
It's closer to the rear property line, but from the neighbor on the east, it's farther away.
Oh, I miss, I misspoke then. If I, I meant on the northerly property line, on Old Mountain Road, that is behind the property in question, so on the, behind where the array is going.
Again, it's not very, it's, it's not a very tall array, so I don't, I don't think it's going to be any more visible.
All right, thank you.
Have all of the commissioners had an opportunity to ask any questions that they wish to ask?
No, uh, Commissioner Walsh is next.
Uh, no questions at this time.
All right, uh, Commissioner Marsh?
No questions at this time.
All right, and then, uh, Chair, back to you.
No, nothing. I don't have any questions at this point. Given that that's the case, is there anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak in favor of the application? If so, please let us know by clicking the raise hand option on Zoom. Not seeing anyone, is there anyone who wishes to speak against the application at this time? Same as, and raise your hand via the Zoom feature. Seeing no one wishing to speak further in favor of or against the applicant, I'll close the public portion of the hearing, and we may at this point go to discussion among the commissioners, and I, as I did last time, will reserve till last.
So would you please? Mr. Chairman, I would like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Con Edison Solutions application for variance to reduce rear yard setback from, I guess, thirty-one feet or fif- fifty feet under the zone, thirty-one feet currently uh, approved to twenty-three feet for a ground-mounted solar array at Ten Mountain Lane, R eighty zone, as presented and on file in the planning office with the following condition, that the applicant shall work with town planning staff to provide proper screening hedges or arborvitae along the westerly property line of Two Mountain Lane and the easterly line of Ten Mountain Lane to minimize visibility of the ground-mounted solar array.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Given that we have a motion and a second, in order, with myself going last, could we have public, could we have comment or discussion, please?
All right, Commissioner Cloud?
No comment.
Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn?
No comment.
Nadine?
No comment.
Commissioner, uh, Stonehorn?
It's my motion. I will say that, um, originally, as set forth in the application, I may have had difficulty finding a hardship, but in light of the comments that the Farmington Valley Health District was concerned about locating this array in the reserve area for the septic system, I find that that is uh, sufficient hardship, and there will not be any, uh, danger or, or, uh, altering of the location to any of the neighboring properties, and therefore I support my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Walsh?
Uh, no comment.
All right, and then, back to you, Chair?
No further comments. I agree with Commissioner Stonehorn. Therefore, having closed the public hearing and heard comment from the commissioners, may we have a roll call vote, please?
All right. Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Nadine?
Aye.
Commissioner Stonehorn? Commissioner, uh, Stonehorn?
Aye.
And then Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And then, back to you, Chair?
Aye.
All right. That.
We have now taken care of the election of officers, the two public hearings on tonight's agenda, and I recall, may we have a motion to approve, please, the minutes of the December thirteen, two thousand twenty zoning Board of Appeals meeting?
So I move.
May we have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, may we have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't think a roll call vote is necessary on that one.
Aye. Good night.
Thank you, thanks everybody for participating and for your time and effort.
Have a good night.
The meeting is now concluded.
Good night.